A glorious God and a gracious Father, greater you Lord and greater to be praised. Your greatness is unfathomable, your greatest unsearchable. In the most precious name of Lord Jesus Christ, this evening hour on the twenty-second of March 2023, we come into your house, we come into your presence and fall prostrate before your throne, again and again acknowledging that you're the God who reigns, you're the God who redeems, you are the God who has become a righteousness. Your God is enthroned on high, you are high and lifted up. Your God on the heavens and the heaven of heavens cannot contain, but it desired you that you make us as your abode, as your passion, as your citadel, as your dwelling place. And for the love of your people of this area, you have been so good to us that you raised a testimony twenty-five years ago so that your people could come and be established in your house, in your presence, in your word amongst your people all around the table. And oh Lord, when we recollect this, the faithfulness of yours, the favour of yours towards us, oh Lord, words can never suffice to explain. Oh Lord, as we contemplate on your faithfulness and celebrate your faithfulness during these days, we pray that you may be gracious towards us and give us hope in heavens so that we be able to be blessed by your presence and by your word. Oh Lord, even this evening hour, we are grateful to you for the blessing of, the soundness of word that you have blessed us with over the years. Thank you for the men and women of God who could come and minister unto us. Oh Lord, refresh our souls, nourish our souls and also establish us in right doctrine. Heavenly Father, we also are grateful to you for the work that has been accomplished in terms of expanding your kingdom and also for edifying your saints in so many ways. Heavenly Lord, may all glory be to you and glory to you alone. This evening hour, we come and once again commit this session to your care and to your glory. Oh Lord, may it be the time of singing, may it be time of learning songs and above all, oh Lord, sharing of your word. We beg of you that you may empty your servant and the interpreter, equip them by your spirit and by your word. And oh Lord, do meet me, meet us according to our need and above all, oh Lord, may your own need may be revealed unto us so that we may take it up as a challenge, as an opportunity for us to pursue, oh Lord, and accomplish your purposes as long as we live on this earth. Heavenly Father, take charge of all the responsibilities, may it be music, oh Lord, may it be other ministries, oh Lord, may it be people who are coming from far and near, please hasten their steps and bring them on time. No one may lose even an iota of the portion that you have kept for them. And bring people, oh Lord, with genuine brokenness, genuine need, genuine thirst, genuine hunger so that, oh Lord, when your word is ministered, it may seep into their hearts and become real in their lives. Oh Lord, may this congregation maybe be famous in the courts of heaven for its life of Christ, for its love of Christ and for the light of Christ that she exhibits in and through this area. And oh Lord, this may be becoming, this may become a congregation where men and women of God are manufactured and sent across the globe as missionaries. Oh Lord, to that extent, to that extent, oh Lord, may your purpose be accomplished. Once again committing ourselves to your glory and seeking your grace for this evening's session, we pray this prayer with thanks given in the name of Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen. We will sing song number two. Padisankya, Rendu Padukundamuk. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Pallavichchernam paduthamuk, jagaartak vinnandi. Dantharvata, neerchkun, manikals paduk. Okay, Uddhithens. Padisankya naaluku tharum, madalbetukundamuk, padisankya naaluku. Padisankya naaluku, O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva. Eho va deva, prabhuva la prabhuva, darshanamichu devu devu. Eho va deva, prabhuva la prabhuva, darshanamichu devu devu. Hunna vaadavu neethu devu, hunna vaadavu neethu devu. O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva, Neethyavasi Neevu. O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva, Neethyavasi Neevu. Elshadai prabhuva, sarva shakti matthura, samppuna trupthi nichu prabhuva neevu. Elshadai prabhuva, sarva shakti matthura, samppuna trupthi nichu prabhuva neevu. Samrutini raksharanu vichu vaadavu, samrutini raksharanu vichu vaadavu. O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva, Neethyavasi Neevu. O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva, Neethyavasi Neevu. Eho va eere, chuchu konu vaadavu, eho va rope swastha parachu vaadavu. Eho va eere, chuchu konu vaadavu, eho va rope swastha parachu vaadavu. Eho va nissi vijaya vichu vaadavu, eho va nissi vijaya vichu vaadavu. O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva, Neethyavasi Neevu. O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva, Neethyavasi Neevu. Eho va kadeshu, shuddhi cheyu vaadavu, eho va shalemu, shanti kartavu. Eho va kadeshu, shuddhi cheyu vaadavu, eho va shalemu, shanti kartavu. Eho va sikkenu manitayu neevu, eho va sikkenu manitayu neevu. O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva, Neethyavasi Neevu. O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva, Neethyavasi Neevu. Eho va rohi, lokasaurakshakura, gurrellanennati keedavaivu. Eho va rohi, lokasaurakshakura, gurrellanennati keedavaivu. Vaatini viduva kanadi vedavu, vaatini viduva kanadi vedavu. O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva, Neethyavasi Neevu. O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva, Neethyavasi Neevu. Eho va shamma, ichcha tu na vaadavu, jivintuvu prabhu yuga yugavu. Eho va shamma, ichcha tu na vaadavu, jivintuvu prabhu yuga yugavu. Sadhammuni tonenu chedavu, sadhammuni tonenu chedavu. O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva, Neethyavasi Neevu. O Abraham Saku, Israelu Deva, Neethyavasi Neevu. Now we will sing song number two. Song number two. We will listen to the chorus and the stanza once, then again we can sing together. Pallavichchernamuk sarvindamuk, thantharvata, andar kalispadukundamuk. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Stuti ki yogemu, prabhu ni namam. Stuti ki yogemu, prabhu ni namam. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Madhurayesu ni namam. Swargamu veedi, jagamu nakarigi, siluvalavrakta mukchindinchenu. Swargamu veedi, jagamu nakarigi, siluvalavrakta mukchindinchenu. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Madhurayesu ni namam. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Stuti ki yogemu, prabhu ni namam. Stuti ki yogemu, prabhu ni namam. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Madhurayesu ni namam. Swargamu veedi, jagamu nakarigi, siluvalavrakta mukchindinchenu. Swargamu veedi, jagamu nakarigi, siluvalavrakta mukchindinchenu. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Madhurayesu ni namam. Siluva paysaitaattlu nuodinchii, toliginchenu naraka sikshenu. Siluva paysaitaattlu nuodinchii, toliginchenu naraka sikshenu. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Madhurayesu ni namam. Papulakovii, boochanamosagii, neerpugathanri tonaikey mu chesin. Papulakovii, boochanamosagii, neerpugathanri tonaikey mu chesin. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Madhurayesu ni namam. Rakta mukchemamum, shuddhulajesin, devuni pootrulugamum maachin. Rakta mukchemamum, shuddhulajesin, devuni pootrulugamum maachin. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Madhurayesu ni namam. Atmalovarasu lugamamujesin, devuni bandira muganirminchin. Atmalovarasu lugamamujesin, devuni bandira muganirminchin. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Madhurayesu ni namam. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Stuti ki yogemu, prabhu ni namam. Stuti ki yogemu, prabhu ni namam. Madhuramadhuramu Yesu Namam. Madhurayesu ni namam. Song number eight. Song number eight. Pallavichchernamuk sarvpadukundamuk, thilshundak kalispadundi. Chala suluvaini tune. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Iyatrano mundukku sagina todpadii. Iyatrano mundukku sagina todpadii. Yesu reenadupunu, manalunu. Yesu reenadupunu, manalunu. Tanamargamu handhuna, tanamargamu nandhuna. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Kalispadukundamuk. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Iyatrano mundukku sagina todpadii. Iyatrano mundukku sagina todpadii. Yesu reenadupunu, manalunu. Yesu reenadupunu, manalunu. Tanamargamu handhuna, tanamargamu nandhuna. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Iswaa margamu. Ento karvainadi, asilva margamu. Ento vilukainadi, kristune guriga. Nunchina, kristune guriga. Nunchina, vijayamu nishayamu, vijayamu nishayamu. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Ihamantu shramalu, raanunna mahimalu. Ihamantu shramalu, raanunna mahimalu. Ennadaa dhi navii kaavu ga. Ennadaa kaavu ga. Kristedu kaavu papunu, kristedu kaavu papunu. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Iyajagati uksatramal, badalo kaligina. Iyajagati lo kashthamal, badalo kaligina. Dairyamu viduva ka yundubu, dairyamu viduva ka yundubu. Jayinchapramu yemun, jayinchapramu yemun. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Manajivita mantayu anukshana mo yuttame. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Idiyesilva margamu, mahimraaja mundanu. Shurigasong number ten. Singing song number ten, thilshun paduk. Charunnam kashtham paduk.
चारणम कष्टम पड़दा
ईजीवित मुख्षणम बंगुरमे नीजीवित मुख्षणम बंगुरमे ओका गणियलो नेगति इंचेदवु ओका गणियलो नेगति इंचेदवु नीजीवित मुख्षणम बंगुरमे नीजीवित मुख्षणम बंगुरमे अवले नीजीवितमु नीति बुढ़गवले नीजीवितमु संपूर्ण मुगा नशिंचु संपूर्ण मुगा नशिंचु सालीपो एडु विरलवले सालीपो एडु विरलवले नीदु प्रत्यु कुन्नदिका नीदु प्रत्यु कुन्नदिका नीजीवित मुख्षणम बंगुरमे नीजीवित मुख्षणम बंगुरमे सम्पदलो तौरमु नु तनकम्पदलो तौरमु नु तलो नुन्ना सर्वमु नु तलो नुन्ना सर्वमु नु वेहत्यमु गीती वैभव मनतयु वेहत्यमु गीती वैभव मनतयु विरचेदवु ओका दिनमन्दे निव विरचेदवु ओका दिनमन्दे नीजीवितमु बंगुरमे नीजीवित मुख्षणम बंगुरमे मो सभो दिविगा नीव विरलो मो सभो दिविगा नीव विरलो नष्टपडित्तिवी पापमु नु नष्टपडित्तिवी पापमु नु नेडे रंबो एसुनी कड़को नेडे रंबो एसुनी कड़को नीकयनत्तमु शिंदिंचेनुगा नुक्त विल्लचु जुन्नारु नीजीवित मुख्षणम बंगुरमे नीजीवित मुख्षणम बंगुरमे ओका गणियलो नेगति इंचेदवु ओका गणियलो नेगति इंचेदवु नीजीवित मुख्षणम बंगुरमे नीजीवित मुख्षणम बंगुरमे
मैं इल्ल पल्ला बाट कुन्दा
एवरी प्रॉमिस इन डी बुक इस माइन एवरी चैप्टर एवरी वर्ल्ड्स एवरी लाइन फॉल डी ब्लेसिंग्स ऑफ इस लव डिवाइड एवरी प्रॉमिस इन डी बुक इस माइन क्रंद वाक्तनमु लन्नीनावी प्रति अत्ययमु वरस वचनमु तन दिव्य प्रेम वाक्तनमु नु क्रंद वाक्तनमु लन्नीनावी वी प्रेस गॉड फॉर थिस वंडरफुल डेज़ ऑफ फेलेशिप एंड मिनिस्ट्री ऑफ गॉड्स वर्ड
देवुनी वाक्य परिचर्यालो इधिंगा अद्भुतमयना मरी दिनामुलु प्रत्येक दिनामुलु कुर्तामुलु देवुड़ माँक दायचेसन दिके देवुनिक स्तुतलु
We are going to inherit all things.
अन्नीटिनी मनम स्वतंत्रिंच्कून बोतुनाम
So that is what we are going to see tomorrow morning.
रेपुदेमु मनम आदेच्यूस्कुण्टाम
Ah, evenings we have been seeing the mysteries of God.
सायंकाला ध्यानामुल्लो मनमु देवुन्योक्कम मर्ममुलन गुरिंची ध्यानिस्तुनाम
So, we have seen what is a mystery.
मर्ममंटे एमिट्यानदी मन चूस्याम
And we have seen which are the uh seven mysteries which I took out from the word of God.
देवुन्य वाक्यमुलनुची मरिन्यन तिस्कुना येड़ मर्माले गुरिंची चूस्याम
And we mentioned about it.
दानी गुरिंची विवराल चूस्यामु
Yesterday and therefore yesterday we studied two such mysteries.
रेंडु अलांटी मर्ममुले गुरिंची निन्ना मोन्ना ध्यानिंचनाम
Ah, one was uh Christ knew the hope of glory.
बिलोन्ना कृष्टु महिमा निरीक्षणे उन्नाडु मोदत्तिदि
And also the mystery of the Gentiles coming into the church, into the light.
अन्या जनुले वेलिगिन्चा बढुटा लेदा संघमुले चेयर्चा बढुटाने मर्ममु रेंडवदी
Uh, today we are going to see another mystery.
ईरोजिंकोका मर्ममु चूस्ताम
So kindly turn with me to first Corinthians chapter fifteen, shall we read from verse fifty-one to fifty-four.
उड़देचिसनातो कुड़ा करंतिल राष्ट्र मध्यपत्तिका पदिहनोज्यामु याबयोकटुनुची याबय नालगोच्चनालु सोदूकुटाम
Usually these verses are read during the funerals, when we conduct funeral, we read these verses.
भूस्तापना कार्यक्रमाला संधर्भालो सहजंगा मनमु ईभागल्नी चलूतूंटाम
Because, you know our, the funerals are very important for us.
इंदिकंटे भूस्तापनामु अन्नदी मनकु चाला प्रामुक्यम अन्नदी
Ah, people, you know, cry, weep and all that at the time of death.
मरि मरणमु संभविचना आ सम्यमलो प्रजलु येडुस्तारु एंथो दुखमुक दुखमतूंटार
And we say, oh, we bury, we hand over the body to the mud.
अबटी मंटिकी मनुगा आ मौतिका देहन्नी पाती पेडुतुनाम मंटाम
Ah, that is what many Christians do.
कृष्टुलाने कुल आदेच्यास्तार
Then will they will say rest in peace.
तरवाता मरि विश्रांतिदी रायपी रस्टिन पीसनी रास्ताम
But we use the word, we sow it.
मनमु एमाटनु मनमु एममाटनु उपेक्षिताम अन्तोका वित्तनमुनु वित्तुटा अने माटनु उपेक्षिताम
Actually, that is the word which is used in first Corinthians chapter fifteen.
मोदत्तिकोरिंती पदिहनोज्यामलो कुड़ा वास्तवनिकी आदेआ माटनु व्रास्कुट्नार
We, we are not just, that's why, at least we don't do it in back in Patmos, some people put it and we don't mind also. They will take some mud and then put saying that, you know, it has come from the mud and we are returning to mud and all that.
मंटिलोनुच्चिंदिगा बटी मनुकेदी नप्पगिस्तुनामनी कोधमन चेस्तार कन्ने पटमोशलो मेमाते अलाकु चेयमु
But the true thing is, it is not that that is gone in the mud and finished off.
सत्तिमेविटंटे चुरंडी आदि आदि मनुलो कलिपेस्यामु इंका दांतुरा अंतरता आईपुन्ननी कात
When we sow a seed.
मनमु का वित्तनु वित्तनपुडु
We sow in hope.
निरीक्षणतो वित्तुतुनाम
The farmer has great hope.
गराहितुकी गोपन निरीक्षण उन्तदी
Ah, what is the hope?
एंटन निरीक्षण
Ah, after a few days.
कुणरोजल्थरात
This will bud.
ईवित्तनालु मोलकेताय
And it will become a plant.
आदि ओकम मोक्कायतदी
And it will give fruit.
आदि फलमिस्तदी नाकु
Ah, and then he will get a harvest.
दानीका आयनकु पंटोस्तदी
So, this body which is dead also is sowed in the mud, just as a farmer sows a seed.
ओकराहितु एलागेते वित्तरमु वित्तुतुनाडु ईदेहमुनु कुड़ा ओकरोजदी लेस्तदी लेदा ओकरोज दानी पंटं चूस्तामन्ना निरीक्षणतो वित्तुतार
That is why we don't put any flowers.
अंदिके मनम पूल एयम
Even if you put or don't put hardly matters.
मिर वेसिना पूल वेख्पना अंदुले पेत विष्म एनले
Ah, we don't have any rules like that.
अलाकु नियमने बंदन लेयम लेयम मनकी
But we don't do it.
मनम चेयम अंते
Because it is not like a flower.
इंदिकंटा ददद पू गादु कदा
Ah, the flow, the flower and the grass, they, they are very bright, but after some time it dries and it goes away.
पू गड्डी एदेना कंचुरंडी आदि आरंभमुले एंथो अंधमुक उन्तदी कन्ने तरवाता देंडी पोतदी
Ah, that is the life of an ordinary man.
अनगा सामान्यडेना ओकम मानवनका परिस्थितला उन्तदी
Ah, he shines, he has a glory, then after that he goes down and finally he dies like a flower and that is the end of him.
तना जीवतमुलो एंथो उन्नतस्थायिकी एदिकी अला पुष्पिंची अला एंथो चक्का कनबडी मरला आतरु मरणिस्ताडु लेदा कनबडकु बोतार
But that is not the case with a believer.
आइते विश्वासी ओक्का विष्मला अलाकु उन्ददु
We are only, we are only putting that, that body with the expectation, with the hope, with the prayer, that one day it will rise again.
प्रार्थनतोनु निरीक्षणतोनु एंथो आश्यतोनु आदेहमुनु मनमु पातीपे समाधिचेस्तुनाम इंदिकंटे ओकरोज आदेहमु लेस्तदी अनी
So apostle will call it mystery of resurrection.
अपोसलडु मर्दानिनी पुनरुत्थानम्योक्कम मर्ममु अनिन्न पिलिस्तुनाड
Kindly turn with me to first Corinthians chapter fifteen, fifty-one to fifty-four.
देचिसनातो कुड़ा रेंडी मोदत्तिकोरिंतीलोका पदिहनोज्यामु याबयोकटुन्डी याबय नालगोरकु
मारिमार्च
मच्च मच्च अद्गुट्टाम याबयोकटी याबय रेंडु कल्सिनाय आईदिगो मीकोकम मर्ममु तिल्पुचुनानु मनमंद्रमुनी त्रिंच्चमु गानी निमिषमुलोका रेपत पाटुना कडपुरमुरोगगाने मनमंद्रमु मार्पु पोंदुदुमु भूरमुरोगुनु अपडमुरुतुलु अक्षयलिका लेपपडुदुरु मनमु मार्पु पोंदुदुमु चल शेमाइनाई शरीरमु शेतनु अक्षेतन दरिंच्कून मत्यमाने ईशरीरमु अमत्यनु दरिंच्कून वालसीन नदी ईक्षेमाइनदी अक्षेतनु दरिंच्कून नपुडु ईमत्यमाइनदी अमत्यतनु दरिंच्कून नपुडु विजयमंदु मरणमुम रिंगाबेय वेयबडननी रायु पडननी वाक्यमुनेरेवेरनु चाल याबय नालगोरके
Ah, that's enough for the present. Shall we pray?
रेंडी प्रार्थना
Well, dear father, eternal God, what a great ministry you have given to us. That is to prepare a bride for the Lord Jesus Christ.
अनगा प्रवेणेस्तु कृष्टुकोकोका संघमुनु सिद्धपरुष्टने परिचन पकिच्या
To prepare ordinary men like us, born in sin, brought up in sin, those who drink sinlike water, but born again, baptized, added into the church.
पापमुलो जन्मिंची, पापमुलो परिगी, पापमुनु तिनी त्रागुतु अटलु प्रभा मरि उन्ना पापुलमाइना माकरोकु प्रभा निवु आईविष्यालनी संगतुन सिद्धपरिच्छनार
What a great privilege which you have given to us.
प्रभा मिर माकीच्या आधिकतेन्थोकपदी
We are the most blessed people in the whole universe.
ईविष्मंत्तेटलो प्रभा मेमे अंदरिकंटे आधिकतेकलावारम
And when we sleep, we are buried with a hope as I was sharing.
अटलु प्रभा पंचकुना रीतिगा मेमु प्रभा एंथो निरीक्षणतो उन्नामनी प्रभा ईविष्मला गुत नाप्कम जेस्कुटाम
So dear Lord, we thank you for this great hope which we have.
प्रभा माकुन्ना ई गोपन निरीक्षण बटिनी कोणनमुलु स्तुतुले जेलिस्तुनार
So dear Lord, even as we look into the mystery of resurrection.
अटलु प्रिय प्रभा मरि ई पुनरुत्थानमु गुरिंचना मर्ममु मन चूस्कुण्टुन्डगा
Pray that thou will speak to us.
प्रभा मीरे मातो माट्लवल्सिन्गा प्रार्थिस्तुनाम
Pray that thou will hide thy servant behind the cross.
अबरे देचेसी प्रभा मरि ईदास्लनु सल्लुच्चरण मर्गपच्च
Pray that we may hear your still small voice.
ईमलन्यनस्सरम मेम विन्नट्लगा चेन
Pray that all other voices may be put to note.
मिगिता स्वरमुल अन्नित्नी कुड़ा प्रभा मरि मीरे आप्चेन्डी
Your name may be highly exalted.
ईनाममु उन्नतमुगा हेचिच्चबडु काक
Pray that thou will give us this great hope.
ई गोपन निरीक्षण मिर माक देचेस्त्रंडम
And we may understand the mystery of resurrection.
ई पुनरुत्थानमने मर्ममुने ग्रेंच्चन्टलगा चेन
Lord, open our eyes of understanding.
प्रभा माम मनोनेत्रम मीरे तेरवंडी
And we may know the power of resurrection.
अटलु पुनरुत्थाना बलमुने वेरु एरुनट्लगा चेन
So even as we look into thy words.
अटलु निवाक्यमुल चूस्कुण्टुन्डगा मतोमाट्ल
We pray in Jesus Christ's precious name.
ईसु कृष्टु अमिलमना मन प्रार्थिस्तुनाम तंडी
First of all, I would like to say what is resurrection.
मोटमोटिगा पुनरुत्थानमु अन्नदी अंटे एमिट्यानदी चप्पलंकुट्नान
Now, we know the famous chapter in the word of God, that is John chapter eleven, where Lazarus was resurrected.
लाजरु लेपपडिना एंथो सुपरिच्चितमाइना भागमु योहानस्वत्ता पदकुंडोच्यालम मनम मजगजूस्ताम
And we find that wonderful verse in the word of God, eleven twenty-five and twenty-six.
योहानस्वत्ता पदकुंडोच्यामु इरवाय ऐदु इरवाय आरलु अद्भुतमाइना माटले मनम चूस्ताम
Ah, where Jesus claimed that his resurrection and his life.
पुनरुत्थानमुनु जीवमुनु नेने अनी ईसु कृष्टु प्रभु तनुतानु चेपुकुना माटन मन गमिस्ताम
Now, I want to compare the what has happened to Lazarus and what has happened to Jesus Christ.
वटी लाजरु लाजरुकी एम जरिंदी मरि ईसु कृष्टुकी एम जरिंदनदी ओक्सारी पोल्चीच्चुडालनी कोर्तुनार
Ah, strictly speaking, the resurrection within inverted commas, resurrection of Lazarus is not resurrection compared to the resurrection of Lord Jesus Christ.
कच्चितंका मनमु चप्पलंटे लाजरु लेपपडिनदी पुनरुत्थानमु कादु गानी ईसु कृष्टु प्रभु लेपपडिनदी पुनरुत्थानम
Actually, there should be another word which should be used, the word is resuscitation, that is getting back the life.
अंटे प्राणमु तिरिगिवच्चुटा अन्ना माटनु बावश्यमन माकडु उपेक्षित
That is more appropriate.
आदि एंथो सभावुक उन्तदी
Ah, but what has happened to Jesus Christ is true resurrection.
आइते ईसु कृष्टु प्रभुकी संभविंचिंदी निजमाइना पुनरुत्थानमु
Now, I will explain what has happened to Lazarus.
उडु लाजरकी एम एंथो विवरिस्तान
Lazarus was an ordinary man.
लाजरु सामान्यमानु व्यक्ति
Ah, he was not very close to Jesus Christ.
आणे ईसु प्रभुक पेद्दगा सन्नीतुडेंकादु
Like his, his two sisters Martha and Mary.
तना इदरु सहोदरलु मार्ता मरिलु उन्नत सन्नीतंगिने लेडु
Ah, they loved Jesus Christ.
वराइते ईसु प्रभुन प्रिमिच्नार
Martha wanted to cook food and all and we know all that.
मार्ता मरिन्थो मरि भोजनमु वंटलुच्यालनी कोरे एदी मनक तेल्स
And we also know that Mary wanted to sit at the feet of Jesus Christ.
ईसु पादमुले गरु कुच्चलनी मेरिकु नाशा आदि कुड़ा मनक तेल्स
Both of them, both of them loved Jesus Christ.
एदमाने इदरु ईसु प्रभुनु बा प्रिमिच्नार
Ah, one wanted to sit at the feet of Jesus and learn and hear his words.
ईसु पादमुलो दरंडी आणे माटलु विनी आयन अद्दन नेचुक्कलनी ओकरिकी नाशा
Martha wanted to express her love and devotion and dedication to Jesus Christ by cooking very good food.
मंच भोजनमुनु ईसु कृष्टु प्रभुकु वंडुटा द्वार आतना प्रेम आतना भक्तिनी वायराकेमुनु मरि देव प्रभु कनपच्चकूलन्ना कोरिका मार्ता
And we find Lord Jesus Christ appreciating Mary than appreciating Martha although Martha cooked such very good food.
मंच भोजनपदाक्तमुलु मार्ता वंडिना पडिगिनी कुड़ा मार्ता अनुकंटे कुड़ा मरियाने ईसु प्रभु मेचुकुनटु जूस्ताम
That is the case today also.
ईरोजु कुड़ा इदिनाल आदेह उन्दी
Lord Jesus Christ loves people who would like to sit in the presence of God and listen and hear God's word than serving in the house of the God, maybe cooking, maybe doing other things.
देवुन्य सन्नीतिलो कुच्चनी, देवुन्य माटलु विनी, आयन अद्दन नेचुकुने वारंटेने मरि देवडु एंथो ईस्टपडुतुनाडु अनगा मिगिता वंटपरिचलेवे एंथुन्ना गानी
Now this Lazar was sick and dead.
इप्पुडु ईलाजरु रोगीयाई मरणमुको सिद्धगुनाट
And one day he died.
ओकरोज मरिनिच्नाट
And he was buried.
स्पादिबेट्टबेटा समाजच्याबेटा
They sent word to Jesus, Jesus did not come.
मरि ईसुकु कबरु पंपिच्चरु कन्ने रालेद
They were very sorry.
वरेंथो चिंदिस्तुनार
Why Jesus did not come?
ईसु एंदुक रालेदु अन्कुट्नार
But he didn't come.
आयनम मोत्तंकन रालेद
But he came.
तरवातोच्चर
After few days.
अनगा कुणरोजल्थरात
By the time that body was decayed.
अप्पडिके मरि आदेहमु कुलुबड्डुन्नी
But the Lord Jesus Christ called Lazarus and said, come out.
आइते ईसु कृष्टु प्रभु लाजरुनु पिलिची बैडिग्रम मनाट
And he got his life back.
अतनिकी तना प्राणमु तिरिया तनलु वचिनी
And he, he, he got his life and grave clothes were removed.
तना जीवम तनलु गोचिनी मरि आप्रेतवस्त्रल्नी कुड़ा तिसेस्नार
And chapter twelve we find him sitting with Jesus and having a meal with Jesus Christ.
पन्निंदोज्यामुलो मरि ईसु कृष्टुतो पाटु आकडा भोजनमुतुलो कुच्चना वरलो लाजरु कुड़ा ईसुतो उन्नाटनी चूस्ताम
Ah, what, what has happened?
कडे एम जरिंदी
According to our normal way of doing the, he was sick and he died and he was buried.
मनम 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 रित्यालोचन जेस्ते रोग एनाडु मरिनिच्नाडु समाजच्याबेटाडु
And he was, he got his life back.
मरला आयन जीवम आणे प्राणम आयनलु गोचिनी
But he got only the life which he had before his sickness.
अंटे आयन रोगमुनुक मुन्ना जीवमु आदि मात्रम अतंतिर्गोचिनी
Ah, his body was saved, his life was saved.
आंटे आयन जीवमु आणे प्राणम एंथो नदी इंथोकमुन्नाट्य उन्दी
That means he got his old life, how he was before his sickness, that was what he was after he got his life.
तना रोगमुनुक मुन्दु तना जीवतम एलागुंदो आ जीवम एलागुंदो आदेजीवम अला पोंदिनाडन माटा
That was what has happened to Lazarus.
लाजरु विष्मला जरिंददी
Now in the case of Jesus Christ.
तनी ईसु कृष्टु विष्मलो
That is not the same.
अला जरिगलेदु
Now, this compare the Jesus body when he was in the earth before he was crucified.
सिल्वे बडिनं मन दानीक मुन्दु ईसु कृष्टुका देहमु शरीरम एलागुंदो ओक्सारी पोल्चीच्चुडाम
We find Jesus eating.
ईसु प्रभु मरि बोनचेडम चूस्याम
Ah, we find Jesus sleeping.
ईसु प्रभु नित्रपडम चूस्याम
We find Jesus walking.
ईसु वा नरवडम चूस्याम
And he was listening to people.
अंते कादु प्रजल जेप्पे विनरम चूस्याम
And he was speaking.
माट्ल
He was teaching, he was walking, he was doing all this.
नडस्तुनार निपल्ल जेस्तुनार
Just like any, any one of us.
अंडे मनलो अंदर जेस्नाट जेस्तुनार
Now he was crucified.
इप्पुडु सिल्वे वट्टा
His body was put in the grave.
आयन देहमुनु कुड़ा दिसकेली समाजले विट
And he was resurrected on the third day.
उड़ोतिनामन आयन तिरिलेच्चनाट
That body after his resurrection was entirely different qualitatively.
कवटी मरि नान्यतर रूपंगा अनगा सांद्रतपरंगा चूस्ते आयन तिरिलेच्चनाथरात आणे देहमु सम्पून्नका मारिपेनी
You know, one.
मोदत्तिदि
He could disintegrate, you understand what is disintegrate? That is disappear.
अंटे आणे मोत्तंकी अद्रुशमाई मायमाईपोछु
Then his body could travel in a very high speed.
अप्पुडु आयन देहमु एंथो शरवेगमुत्तो प्राणम चेगलदु
Ah, I will try to explain from the word of God.
देवुन्य वाक्यमुचिदिनी विवरिंच्चन प्रार्थना जेस्ताम
You know, when Jesus was resurrected.
ईसु कृष्टु पुनरुत्थानारुपुडु
Mary was very much there.
मरि आकडे उन्दी
We find it all in, in the word of God, John chapter twenty.
योहानस्वत्ता
Verse one onwards when you read, we find all that story.
योहानस्वत्ता इरवाय ज्यामुदोशनुची आकतंतम मन चूताम
And Mary wanted to catch his body.
मरि आयपुडु ईसु देहमुनु दिसकेलालानु कुणी
Jesus said, touch me not.
आ ईसु वन्नाडु अम्मा नन्नु ताकवत्तु
And what, what, what reason he gave?
एंथी कारणम एम जेप्पनाडु
Look, I am just resurrected.
अम्मा निप्रेत पुनरुत्थानाडायनानु
Now I have got a very big job.
बद्दपनुन्द नाकेपुडु
I have to go to heaven.
नैन परलोकम गेलाली
And report to the father.
नातंडकी नैनु चुपिच्कावाली
I had to offer this blood in the altar.
ईरक्तम वा बलिपीतम मेदने नु प्रोक्षिंच्चाल
Ah, then I will come back.
मरला तिरिगोस्तान
Now what happened?
डेंजरिंदंटे
Ah, the place where he was buried.
आयन समाधिचेबन स्थलमलो
There only all these conversations happen.
आकड़े जरिंदी संभाषनाता मरियतो
Touch me not, I have to go and all that.
अम्मा नन्ताको तुने बैठ पाईकेलाली आणा विष्मल आकड़े जरिनाय
Jesus also gave a job to these sisters.
अंते कादु सहोदरीले कुड़ा देवड़ा कड़ो पनपकिंच्चनार
You go and tell the disciples.
एम मिर एली नासिच्चलक जेप्पननान
That I am alive.
नैनु सजीवडने उन्नान
And I am alive evermore.
नैनु युगायगमुलु सदाकलम सजीवडने उन्नान
So, they were all very much excited, these ladies did not know what to do.
याय आडुले केंजल अर्धंगाले ओ उद्वेगमतो उत्तेजमतुनार
One saw the joy of meeting Jesus Christ alive again.
ओकवाईपेमु ईसु कृष्टुनु सजीवमुगा चुड्डम अद्दसंतोष
They are the people who saw Jesus being crucified.
वाले जूसे ईसु प्रभुन सिल्वे वेटम
And they were crying and weeping and all that, all those who were seeing that their master is being killed.
माम यजमानु सिल्वकु मेगल कोट्टपडुतुनाका आयु एडच्चनार रोधिंच्चनार विलिपिंच्चनार
But now they were full of joy.
इप्पुडु सम्पूनमाने संतोष
Oh my Lord, he is alive.
नाप्रभु मा, मा प्रभु सजीवडगान उन्नाट इप्पुडु
But on another side.
आइतिंकोवाईपु
Oh, we couldn't catch his feet.
आयन अकालु बटक्कलेक पयामु
We wanted to worship him.
आयन अनुवारादिंच्चलन
We wanted to kiss his feet.
आयन पादल मुद्देटक्कलन
But he did not allow.
कन्ने आयन अनुमतिच्चले
He did not allow us to touch also.
असलानु ताकडानु कुड़ा अनुमतिच्चले
Ah, then they said, now I have to go and tell this story to everybody.
इप्पुडु एली कत अंदरकी जेप्पा जरिंदनानु कुड़ा परिगत्नार
Then they were running from there.
आकड़ंच्या वाल परिगत
With all their excitement.
वर एंथो उत्तेजमत
Carrying a very big news.
ओकप्पा वार्ता दिसकेल
A very big news to the whole world.
प्रपंचंत मंत्तिकी गोपा वार्ता दिस
That the Jesus whom you killed two days ago, he is alive today.
रेंडु रोजलकीतम मीर चंपिना ईसु इप्पुडु सजीवडुकुनाट
Now what happened?
डेंजरिंदी
Jesus traveled all the way to heaven.
ईसु कृष्टु सर्वत्रा परलोकान्गी प्राणम जेस्नाट
Then he returned.
तिरिगोच्चनाट
By the time these sisters ran and owned the way, Lord Jesus Christ met.
ईसहोदरीलु परलोक वार्गेतुतु इंका राकमुन्द मरला ईसु प्रभुचेस्ता
And he said, all hail, behold, good morning, all hail.
अंदरकी समाधानमु गुड मॉर्निंग अनेस्नाट
And it is written in Matthew chapter twenty-eight.
मत्तेस्वता इरवाय एन
Where, there we find.
आकड़ा मनम चूस्ताम
They held the feet of Jesus Christ.
आकड़ा ईसु कृष्टु पादमुनु वार पादमुले द पादमुल पटकुनी सागिला पडिरी
He had, as I told you, one. He could disappear, disintegrate. Then, number two, he could travel in very high speed. We do not know the distance between Golgotha and Jerusalem and heaven. We do not know the distance. But whatever it is, he traveled all the way. Then he returned. So, he could travel in very high speed. Ah, we see that. So, he had a body which could disintegrate. And it could travel. You know, the largest speed recorded is the speed of light. They say, nothing can travel more. The scientists say, you can have a more speed than the speed of light. I believe Jesus traveled more than the speed of light. Otherwise, within few minutes, how can he go to heaven and come back? So, he could disintegrate. He can travel long distances. And that too in a very high speed. And he can integrate back. The disciples were sitting in a room which was sealed, which was closed. They were full of fear. But Thomas was not there, others were there. They were lost. Although they knew that Jesus is resurrected, these ladies came and told. But at the same time, they have not seen. There appears Jesus Christ. That means, that room had a wall, just like this wall. The windows were also closed for fear of juice. The door was locked. But Jesus could travel through. In his old body, we don't find anywhere. He traveled through a wall. That means, he had a body which could penetrate matter and travel. Go out or come in. But at the same time, people could touch him. As I told you, the sisters touched him, held his feet and kissed his feet and what they prayed. So, what is resurrection? What had happened in that time between Saturday, Friday night and Sunday morning? What was happening? There was no body of Jesus Christ in that grave when he was resurrected. What they put was a dead body. And what came out is a glorified body, resurrected body, a body which had a different way of doing things. We find he was eating even after resurrection. But I believe that body was not dependent upon the food. The system by which that body works is a different system. Our body works on certain principles. Number one, we need oxygen. Now, the resurrected body, I don't think it depends upon oxygen. And our body needs water. That is why we go on drinking water. Otherwise, we feel thirsty. We need water. And drinking water is very good. And this body is dependent upon food. If you don't eat one day, somehow it will manage. Two days, somehow it will manage. Continuously, you don't eat for few days, many people will die after three days, four days, five days, one week or one month, finally they will die. Ah, this body is dependent upon food. Food is essential to the body next to oxygen and water. I am talking about the existence of the body. This resurrected body is not dependent upon oxygen, not dependent upon water, not dependent upon food. But at the same time, I can eat also. In chapter twenty-one of John, we find Jesus eating. I was not dependent, but then, how it was maintained? There is another system. Ah, that body was living on another principle. They were maybe getting energy from God. The light of God may be supplying energy to this body. In heaven, I don't think anybody will be eating and drinking. But they are all alive. Where do they get the energy for life? The light from the Lord is sufficient. So, this is resurrection. Now, the Bible talks about this resurrection and Apostle Paul's one of the most famous prayers. Finally, turn with me to Ephesians, chapter one. There we find this prayer. Now, I want to tell you that Brother Baxing, he will take one verse from this. And he will preach for several hours. Finally, turn with me to chapter one, verse sixteen. There, I will just go very quickly. We have not started the subject yet. Ah, he says, I am praying for you, verse sixteen. What is his prayer? That God, God give you, may God give you the spirit of wisdom, revelation and knowledge of him. That is his prayer. Verse eighteen. Your eyes of your understanding may be enlightened. That is his prayer. Then, he prays for three things. One is, you may know the hope of his calling, verse eighteen, last. Secondly, that you may know the riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints. These are the two things he is praying in verse nineteen and nineteen. Then, third thing what he is praying, that is what we are interested now. Verse nineteen, second part. You may know what is the exceeding greatness of his power to us. Ah, you may know this power. Now, what is this power? That power is called resurrection power. Resurrection power. Now, there are so many things about this power. He calls exceeding greatness of his power. And he says, it is available to us. To those who believe. According to the working of the mighty power. That is, if you have to know the power of resurrection. Ah, the mighty power has to work in us. Now, what is this power? Where it was manifested? Verse twenty in English. Which he wrote in Christ when he raised him from the dead. Then, set him at his right hand in the heavenly places, far above all principalities and ahead of the church and all that in twenty-one, twenty-two. Now, what is this power? That is called resurrection power. And this is the power which was operating in the dead body of Jesus Christ during that few hours. I believe every atom of the body of Jesus, which was dead, crucified and dead, the power of resurrection was operating. At the end of the working. One, he got a new body. That is called the resurrected body or glorified body. It had all the characteristics of a resurrected body. Then, it had life. Ah, that did not have life. That body did not have life. But when the Holy Spirit worked on every atom of his body. He got a new life. What was operating there, that is called the power of resurrection. And what is Apostle Paul's prayer? You may know what is this power. Ah, it is available to you and me. As I told you this morning or yesterday, I think Brother Baxing used to talk about this extensively, the power of resurrection. I had to struggle, struggle, pray, pray, fast and pray, study God's word to understand what is this power of resurrection. If you can understand, it is great. It is wonderful. And we should know. Apostle Paul's burden for every believer is that their eyes of understanding being enlightened. And know this power of resurrection. So, may God speak to us. May God give us a great desire to know this power. And experience it in our life. Ah, it is available to us. And we can experience it in our life. Now, you come back to First Corinthians, chapter fifteen and verse fifty-four. Behold, I show you a mystery. Now, Lord Jesus talked about this power. He talked about it in John, chapter eleven and verse twenty-five and twenty-six, this morning also we read it. Ah, now you read verse twenty-five. And the question is, who is the one who believes? That I am the resurrection and life. I explained it, I think, in the morning. But we will see it again. There, he is talking about resurrection and he said, I am the resurrection and I am the life. Then, continue to read. Now, we find two groups of people in verse twenty-five, second part and twenty-six. Finally, turn with me to twenty-five. The second part. I am the resurrection and the life. He that believeth in me, though he were dead, yet shall he live. Now, he is talking about those who were dead. Now, you think of the brethren who were believers and they have died. How many of our parents who are believers, if they are believers, they died. Or our senior servants of God, they lived, they believed, they died. Now, what is Lord Jesus telling? He that believeth in me, though he were dead, yet he shall live. They will live again. That means, they will be resurrected, they will get resurrection life. That is one group. And another group is. Verse twenty-six. And whosoever liveth and believeth. Now, we all belong to this group. Because we are not dead, we are alive. So, whosoever liveth, but at the same time, believer. You understood verse twenty-six, verse part? Whosoever liveth and believer. What will happen to them? They will never die. They will never die. Believe it thou not, he is asking. There are two types of people. I suppose Lord Jesus Christ comes today. These two groups are there. Ten years down the line, if he comes. Or tomorrow, if he comes, same group will be there. Now, what is the mystery? That is what we are going to talk. Coming back to this First Corinthians, chapter fifteen. There he says, behold, I will show you a mystery, verse sixty-one. Number one, we shall not all sleep. Ah, that is what he says first. We will come back to it. Number two, we shall all be changed. Number three, in a moment, in the tingling of an eye, at the last trump. In a moment, in the tingling of the eye. Then, at the last trump. The trumpet shall sound and the dead shall be raised. Incorruptible and we shall be changed. And this corruptible must put on incorruption and this mortal must put on immortality. Now, we are going to see one by one. Now, the Bible usually not use the word death. When a child was dead. The parents came and told Jesus, she is dead. What did Jesus say? No, no. She is sleeping. So, we also use that phrase. Sleep in Christ. He slept in Christ. Now, what is the difference? If you say, he died. My father died or my mother died. That is all, father died and we read and that's all, the life is over. But suppose I say, my father is sleeping. Then, that means, he is sleeping, he will get up. So, that is why we are using the phrase. So, the meaning of the word, verse thirty-one, middle, we shall not all sleep means, we shall not all die. Because, instead of death, we use the phrase, sleep. And sleep is the correct word because sleep means you will, you will get up. If you are dead, you will not get up. There is a story about a man who was dying. They, he had five sons. Four sons were believers. My last son was not a believer. Oh, he was, that father was a very godly man. He knew he is going to die. No, he called all his sons. Then he told to the one, two, three, four. He said, good night, good night. What do you say, good night to whom? Good night, that means, we will see you in the morning. And when we see, we say, good morning. That means, you will see again. But the fifth boy. He said, goodbye, bye bye. What does it mean? I will not see you again. I am going to heaven. You are a sinner. You are not repentant. You will die. And you will go to hell. I will not see you. He said, goodbye, bye bye. What I am trying to say, this man knew that he is going to sleep and he will get up, he will only see his children who are believers. So, we shall not all sleep. That he is talking about the group which are alive. Any point of time. There will be some believers who will be there at the time of God's coming. We shall not all sleep. But we shall all be changed. So, this is what we are going to see. So, we will not sleep, some people will be there at the time of his coming. So, we will see a little bit as the time permits. We shall all not sleep. So, some people will be alive. Now, they will get up. Or they will be resurrected. Finally, turn with me to Daniel, chapter twelve and verse two. Many of them that sleep in the dust of the earth shall awake, some to everlasting life and some to shame and everlasting contempt. All will resurrect. The bodies which are asleep, they will awake. Some to everlasting life. Some to everlasting shame and everlasting contempt. First, Jerusalem, in chapter four and verse thirteen. But I would not have you be ignorant, brethren, concerning them that are asleep, that is sorrow not even as others which have no hope. Now, Apostle Paul is telling, I will show you a mystery. He started about this mystery. We shall all not sleep. Sleep which means physical death. So, we will not do this. Now, if you look at the Old Testament. There are some other, some people who were translated alive. In Genesis, chapter five and verse twenty-four, don't take, we find Enoch. There it is written, he was walking with God and he was not. He was walking with God and like that, like that disappeared. He did not see death. Another person is. Elijah. Second Kings, chapter two and verse eleven. There also, he was just taken up. So, all will not die. Some will be alive. There are some examples in the Old Testament like Enoch and Elijah. And now, the apostle says, millions of Christians will someday reach the presence of God without dying. Behold, I show you a mystery, we shall not all sleep, but we shall be changed. So, at any point of time, when Lord returns. All will not die. They will be taken up. But, they have to be changed. Now, just imagine. Can we go up like that? If you jump up, we will come back. But, when Jesus Christ was ascended. We find it in Acts, chapter one. Everybody saw, his body was there, he was speaking, then suddenly taken up. All were wondering. Five hundred people would have been there at that time. Just like a helicopter, not like a plane. Ah, just like a helicopter, not like a plane, plane goes like this and goes up eh?
Ah, a plane lagadu, mudukele.
But a helicopter, it just goes up.
Okka helicopter laga, unnappa.
But slowly it goes up.
Unna chodun, emmadigala paykalpottu.
Have you seen a rocket going?
Ah, rocket, traladam jusara?
There also is like, rocket is there, it just goes like that.
Rocket kuda ante, unnachodun, chalaga paykalpottu.
Ah, such an amount of fuel is burnt.
Ante, enta, indanam akkadakarchavatun choodandi?
Ah, there are two things.
Rendu vishal.
One is, it is go, going against gravity.
Guruthvaakasana, shetik, virodanga, paykalutunde.
And then it has got tremendous speed.
Rendu, adhika, atti vegamu, shere vegam.
Otherwise, it cannot take up.
Ah, vegam lekappu, adhi, paykal.
It will fall down.
Adhi, kinnabadatadi.
So, so much of energy is required for anything to go up.
Eedaina paykalalanta, shakti ausram.
If you take anything and you, it tries to go up, it cannot, if you drop it, it will fall.
Eedaina manam paykettie, alaga paykalatante, ledhu, kinnabadatadi.
So, these people who are not slept, who are alive, if they have to go up, they have to go against gravity.
Ipudu, ee nidrinchani varu, ante, sajivalga unnavaaru, ee guruthvaakasana, shetik, shaktiki, virodanga paykalal.
Ah, that means.
Ante?
Nothing should tie them down.
Varini, ee dugu, kindi kattupadegudu.
Ah, if they are tied down, how can they go?
Okavela, ee dana, kattupadesa, etla paykalat.
The helicopter is tied on every side and it tries to go, it cannot go unless you break that chain.
Helicopter, ne nalugu mulallo, dani, tadles, kattestha, adhi, paykalaladu, ah, vaadi, virakkutunna, elthadadi.
In Hebrews chapter twelve, verse one and two.
Hebrews chapter, pannindu ochham, muddrindu vashshankalo.
There it says, laying aside every besetting sin.
Sulugaa chikla bettu, pratipapa, manamu, vedichpetti.
It's a wonderful two verses.
Padatbu, manu, rendu vashshankalo.
Ah, he talks about the walk of Jesus or running of Jesus.
Yesu Kristi, okka, parugunugurunchi, aina, narakugurunchi.
For the joy that was set before him endured the cross.
Aina, tanamundunchi, unchapadina, anandamukurukku, aina, stalurayinchnadu.
With patience and we have been asked to run the race with patience.
Manamu kuda, opikattu, parigattu, damu, antanadu.
We have been asked to lay aside every besetting sin.
Sulugaa chikla betti, pratipapa, manu, vedichpettaali, pakkar bettaali, chappavatunna, manak.
In other words, every attachment.
Inka maadlo, chappalante, mudipadunna vaatinundi.
The things which pulls us down.
Manali, kindi kilaage vaatinundi.
Has to be snapped.
Avani, kuda, katrinchabadali.
Then only they can be taken up.
Appude, choodandi, valu, payketta badat.
So, that is why we should not look anywhere else, we should look unto Jesus, the order and finisher of our faith.
Andike, manam, ittu, vadu, chooda, ledhu, yesu, apichu, choodala, lekpotte, manam, visvasu, apaninchabadatadi.
Shall we read it all together, verse one and two, twelve, verse one and two?
Rendu, Hebrews chapter, pannindu ochham, muddrindu vashshankalo, andram kalshadu, kontam. Hebrews chapter, pannindu ochham, madhridu vashshankalo, andram kalshi, intogopa, sakshi, samuhamu, megamvala, manalu, avarinchunandana, manamu, kuda, pratibharu, manu, sulugaa, chikla bettu, paapu, vedichpetti, visvasu, manuku, kartayu, dhani, konasagincho, vaadunaina, yesu, apichu, chuchu, mane, duttu, unchapadina, pandamalu, opikattu, parigattu, damu, aina, tanedu, unchapadina, anandamukurukkai, au, manam, nirelaxa, betti, silvanu, sainchii, devuni, simasana, okka, kudipasham, naas, chinidai, unnadu.
Now, when this, this will take place.
Ie, epur jergutundi?
Secondly, at the last trump.
Rendu, adhika, kada bhuram rogu nu appudu.
Ah, so, when this will happen.
Ie, epur jergutundandi?
The, the trump will sign or the trumpet will sound.
Bhuram roga, badinappudu.
There is a song in English, many of you may be knowing. When the trumpet shall sound and time shall be no more. Anybody knows that song?
Partakada?
There is, when the trumpet will sa, sound.
Ante, bhuram roga, badinappudu.
Ah, now, what is the meaning of this?
Mari, dinatham enti?
Ah, all scholars, Bible scholars, they think, what is this trumpet?
Kabati, ee Bible pandhitulu, vidhavan, vidhavantul, andu, vidhavans, andarugutra, ee, bhura, enti, ankunadu?
Ah, we find the trumpets in the book of Revelation.
Prakshan gandamulo, bhuralagurichu, justam.
Ah, but here it is said, the last trump.
Aite, ikkada, kada bhura, ani, chappavatundi?
One scholar, he says, it has to, it is a, a allegory from the military.
Kabati, sainamulonundi, thiyabadina?
Army.
Sainamulonundi, thiisi, okka, sadhrushamuka, dinchepen, okka, vidhavansudanadu?
There it seems, there will be one trumpet.
Okka bhura, untadanta?
The, the message is, get ready.
Vatthamanaventente, miru, sidhapadendi, ani?
Get, 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 get up.
Nir levanakkanu.
They may be sleeping.
Baushani, nitrabhotunnu, ochu?
Then the sound will come.
Ah, bhuram rogu nu appudu, kaddamostadi?
And then, and then they have to get up.
Ah, shabdamu, bhura shabdha, vinagana, levali varu.
Then after some time, another trumpet will come.
Okta, samayam taravata, inku, oksaari, bhuram, rogi star.
Ah, that is different.
Adhi, vere?
That is, get ready.
Sidhapadendi, ani, jepputaku?
Ah, I am yourself, get ready.
Mimmalimiru, aidu, daralu, jeshkoni, sidhapadendi, ani?
Then third will come.
Taravata, moodobura.
And they call it the last trumpet.
Deen, ni kada bhura, antar?
Ah, that is different from the first two.
Ante, madhridu, binnanguttadi?
That means march.
Ante, ikka, munduku sagendi, ani?
So, this is the last trumpet.
Kabati, ikkada, idi, kada bhura, chivaribura.
Ah, so, at the last trumpet.
Kabati, ee kada bhura, rogu nu appudu?
We don't know when.
Ipudu, teledu, manaki?
But trumpet shall, when the trumpet will, ah, sound.
Aite, ah, bhuram rogu nu appudu?
And time shall be no more, time shall be no more.
Inkasamayam undadu, manaki?
Ah, so, that is happening at the last trumpet.
Kabati, kada bhura, bhuram rogu nu appudu, adhi, jergutundi?
Ah, so, at the last trumpet, we will be, ah, we will be taken up.
Ah, kada bhuram rogu nu appudu, manam andramu, ettabadam.
Ah, so, the last trumpet is a marching orders to of rapture of the church.
Sangamu, ettabadutaku, munduku sagipovutana, chuchistu, kada bhuram, rogu thundhi?
Ah, even so, them also which sleep in Jesus, will God bring with them. First Thessalonians chapter four and verse fourteen.
Motthesunna, nalgu, ochhamu, padnalu, ochshnam, yesu, muthipundhi, trigalechinna, nani, naminadala, adhe, prakaramu, yesunnu, nidrinchinavari, ni, devu, aina, tokku, venta, bettukunivachunu?
First Thessalonians chapter four, verse fourteen.
Motthesunna, nalgu, padnalu.
Now, what is death?
Maranam, enti, enti, ikkada?
Ah, what is death?
Maranam, enti, enti?
That is separation of the body from the soul and spirit.
Praana, atmalanundi, dehamu, veeruparachabadutana, mananam, antam.
You know, man has got body, soul and spirit.
Srendi, manavudu, manavani, ki, mari, atma, pranamu, dehamu, evadindi?
Ah, when the soul and the spirit goes away from this body.
Praanamu, atma, vedalipoinappudu, dehamu, migilpottadi.
Ah, that is death.
Adhe, manam.
That is separation of the three parts of the body.
Ante, deha, ah, dehamulona, moodu, bhagala, veeruparachabadha?
Ah, life connects these three.
Jivamu, annadi, ee moodintini, mudijastundi?
Ah, so, what happens when a man dies?
Kabati, okka, manishi, channipanabaram jergutundi?
Ah, he gets sick.
Rooga, itthadu?
Then what happened? Life cannot exist there.
Kudu, ah, ah, vekthilo, jivam, annadi, undadu?
We hear, oh, that man died of heart attack.
Ah, aina, heart attack, okka, channipanadu, antam?
What happens?
Ee, muthadi?
You see, heart is there.
Ante, gunde, undi?
And there are many, many type of heart attacks, I am not going into the deep.
Akarakala, gunde, potunna, avani, ipudu, bohamankundi?
Ah, in one heart attack, one type of heart attack.
Okarakame, na, gunde, potlo?
It processes like this and pumps, ah, ah, blood.
Ante, okka, saari, ah, gunde, itla, pindeesi, ah, rakta, ni, munduku, toseastadi?
But it is not able to do it.
Aite, adhi, cheladu, apani?
Then heart stops.
Appudu, gunde, kotkoda, magipottadi?
So, what happens?
Ie, jergutadi?
Blood doesn't go to any part of the body because it is not pumping.
Ikka, gunda, kotkotladi, kabati, rakta, mu, dehamulona, migitaavali, ka, andadu?
Ah, heart says, I am not able to do my work, I am fed up, I, my time is over, I can't work anymore.
Gunda, antadi, na, pani, nen, chale, kothu, na, samayam, ipundia, antadi?
So, it stops.
Kabati, gunde, kotkoda, magipottu?
Otherwise, it goes on pumping, 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 that is why we are alive.
Lekpotte, gunda, kotkunta, kotkunta, anta, andike, badkunam?
And any part of the body, ah, blood doesn't go.
Kabati, inkab, shari, eedhi, ee, avaya, kati, rakta.
But the most important, it doesn't go to brain.
Aite, annidikant, pramukkam entente?
Brain cannot work without blood.
Medadu, ki, rakta, mu, cheradu, medadu, rakta, lekutha, pani, jayadu?
So, life cannot exist.
Kabati, ikka, jivam, annadi, undadu?
So, life stops.
Jivamu, anna, agipottadi?
That is why, when a man gets heart attack.
Andike, okkar, ki, gunda, potoshnapudu?
You know, many people will go and press him.
Elly, otutha, antar, chalamandeli?
That is, even doctors will come and press.
Vaidul, gudochi, avedanga, otutha, untaru?
That is somehow to revive the heart which, which stopped working.
Ante, aagipoina, gundanu, malapunaruttanchara, ani, ke, prattham jastha?
But when it stops.
Aite, aagipinappudu?
Life cannot exist.
Jivamu, undadu?
Life departs the body.
Dehamulonundi, jivam, annadi, vedalipottadi?
Ah, it is not able to connect the body, soul and the spirit.
Ante, ah, prana, atma, dehamulono, mudipetale.
Now, what happens to the body?
Mari, deham, keemuthadi?
We know, we will cry, we, oh, he died, doctor will come and say, oh, he died, he will give a certificate. And finally, we make arrangements for funeral, we fix the time, we inform people, we inform the church and finally, that body is buried or sewn.
Matthani, ki, eedustam, vilapistam, doctor, nilistam, chad, nijanga, channipanada, edharistam, ah, samadhi, arpaljastam, samadhi, jastam?
That is what happens.
Adhi, jergutadi?
Then what happens to the soul?
Mari, pranamu, keemuthadi?
There, what happens to the spirit?
Atma, keemuthundi?
Now, there is a passage in the word of God where God, Lord Jesus Christ, talks about two people who died.
Yesu Kristu prabhu, idaru, maraninchutanugurunchi, e, cheppinadu?
Ah, ah, the rich man and the lazer.
Danavantu, du, mari, lazer?
Ah, rich man, we, went into the bosom of Abraham. Eh, ah, lazer?
Lazaru, mari, Abraham, rommu, rankunik, velledu?
Rich man went into hell.
Mari, danavantu, du, narkamukvelna?
And he was crying for one drop of water.
Okka, chukka, neeti, koraku, mara, danavantu, eedustunna?
There are so many truths in that, what he said.
Mari, akkada, chappavenna, maatli, no, satyalunai?
Ah, he said, Abader Abraham, send a lazer to me, give me one drop of water, let him put and I am, I am thirsty here.
Tanduvena, Abraham, lazernu, pumpi, okka, chukka, neelu, na, naliku, vaitaj, jena, dahamayutunna, antar?
The Bible says, when you are absent in the body, you are present with the Lord.
Miru, dehamu, nandu, lenatlethe, prabhu, to, unnadu, unnarun, Bible jeptha?
Now, what does the Bible say in this verse?
Kabati, e vashshunla, Bible, jepthamandi?
Now, the souls of all the believers who have slept in Christ.
Christunandu, nidrinchinna, visvasula, pranamulu?
Those souls will come with Jesus Christ at that time of rapture.
Triggi, ettabanappudu, mari, Yesu Kristu, to, partu, venta, bettukunivachunu, antanadu?
Ah, first Thessalonians chapter four and verse fourteen.
Motthesunna, nalugu, padnalu, lechistam?
Them also which sleep in Jesus, will God bring with them.
Adhe, prakaramu, yesu, nandu, nidrinchinavari, ni, devu, aina, tokku, venta, bettukunivachunu?
Ah, now, what will happen?
Prem jergutundi?
These souls will join with the resurrected body.
Ee, pranamulu, punaruttana, dehamulato, kaliskuntai?
Ah, so, the soul only will come.
Pranamu, ostadi?
But now, the body resurrected will join with that body and with, will be with him forevermore.
Punaruttanamaina, dehamu, lechinappudu, ee, pranamu, dehamu, kalisti, sadakalam, prabhatan.
Ah, so, at the time of the trumpet, when the Lord Jesus Christ comes, first, those people who were dead, sleeping in the graves, they will be resurrected, join with their souls and will be with the Lord Jesus.
Kabati, Christu, triggi, vachina, vachina, apsa samayamlo, avedanga, Christunandu, muthulaina, varu, dehamulu, modhutaka, lechi, varu, pranamula, dehamu, to, kalisti, kalichtravala, na, atlu, alu, ettabadi, konipavada?
First Thessalonians chapter four, verse sixteen.
Motthesunna, nalgu, ochham, padharu, ochshnam?
For the Lord himself shall descend from the heaven with a shout and the voice of the archangels and with the trump of God and the dead in Christ shall rise first. And now three things are happening here. One is the Lord himself shall descend. With a shout regarding, yes, with a shout. That is what is happening. And at the minute there is a cry, that is about, this thing I will skip it. Then we find. Verse fifty-two. Verse fifty-two. In a moment. In the twinkling of an eye. In a moment. What does it mean? You know the word which is used for moment. In the Greek, it is atomos. The word atom, atom came out of atomos. The meaning of the word atom is. Indivisible, that means you cannot divide. Any matter, you divide, 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 finally the atom will come. Atom cannot be divided. So that is why it is called atom, atom means undivided, you can divide. Now the word which is used for moment, in a moment. Is the same word. That means time also can be divided. Just like matter can be divided. Time also can be divided. One hour is divided into sixty minutes, sixty minutes is divided into sixty seconds. Sixty seconds is again divided, divided. They say, the twinkling of an eye, that is what we used. In a moment, in the twinkling of an eye. That is the time taken just to close the eyes and open. That is supposed to be the indivisible, indivisible time. That is one fiftieth of a second. So every, whenever we close and open, remember one fiftieth of a second. In the twinkling of an eye. In a moment, in an indivisible time, that means very, very short time. We use the word shanigam or undivided, it may be one fiftieth of a second, the Bible says, in the twinkling of an eye. Within that time, this body has to be changed. Nothing to worry about those who are dead. Their soul will come along with Jesus Christ, joined with the body, resurrected body. But what happens to those who are alive? They have to be taken up. They have to go against the gravity. Join the Lord who has come in the way. He is going to take the church. And then that means they have to be changed. There has to be a drastic change in this body. That means we should become weightless. Can you imagine weightlessness? Now let me tell you something. I may take some time. Now, if you are to go to the space. There is people who go to space. There is one person about, he has said about his experience of going to the space. He is the first Indian who is born in India and lived in India, he paid a heavy price, I mean heavy money and he went and came. So he writes his, says about his experience. It seems they will be taken up. Then a point will come, they are weightless. And then they will be flying, just moving like that. Then they go up also no problem, going down also no problem, but weightless, no weight. They will go and hit somebody. They will fly like birds. It is the weight or the mass and the gravity that is called the weight that pulls us down. Now you have to go up. So they have to be weightless. That is the change what he is talking here. Those who are alive will be changed. That is resurrection. That is rapture. That is the mystery of resurrection. There are more points, I will stop here. Shall we pray? Pradhana Jiskuntam.
That anchors us in hope that one day, that our souls will be united with the bodies for which Christ also died. We will be cautious of the fact that we are not held back by the very values and the weights of this world. This flesh and this world is so attractive. Where many great men and women are falling apart, help us to be faithful till the very end. Help us to appropriate the power of resurrection in our, in our lives, in our day-to-day life. And maybe we also found worthy in all our life to that heavenly calling. May our ears be so sensitive to the trumpet call, oh Lord, when you come in the air, we will be caught up in the midair. Keep us in the fear of the Lord. Keep us in the instruction of the Lord. Keep us in the holiness of God. Sustain us in the strength of God. Oh Lord, encompass us with the peace of God. And lead us by the wisdom of God. We thank you for this day. Thank you for your presence. Send us with your blessings. If your charity and if your life enables to meet tomorrow once again. Tomorrow, the day where we are going to celebrate your absolute faithfulness towards our lives. May our hearts pour out for what you are and for what you are to us because of what you have done in and through your son, Lord Jesus Christ. We pray this prayer with thanksgiving in the name of the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Kind listen to the announcements, please. We really welcome those who have come this evening for the meeting. And who have come for the first time during these meetings. And at the same time, quite a good number also had come yesterday and day before. So we'd like to invite you again to come tomorrow. And we could enjoy God's faithfulness for the past twenty-five years of our ministry. Morning ten o'clock, we have Bible study. Evening, we have a thanksgiving meeting. Mainly we requested El Shaddai saints to be here by six thirty. And others who want to join us, if you are be here by six thirty, you may have some place to sit. Otherwise we have some other arrangements. Of course, if this, in case if it is occupied, I think we are also arranging in the second floor. So kindly pray for this ministry. Thank you for your support, your prayers on our behalf. Tomorrow morning, we have Bible study and then lunch that follows after that. Very simple lunch. But in the evening, we have a special dinner for all of you. It is only to share our joy with all of you. Possibly invite some people also. Shall we pray? Now unto him that is able to keep us from falling into presenters faultless, what is thrown with exceeding joy, the only wise God, our Savior, to whom we glory, honor, dominion and power both now and forevermore. Amen.